... whatever's on our tribe. At this point, I imagine it's probably a lot of relief.
How old are, how old? Gotta be a long-term girlfriend then.
All in a Union bug? Seven or something?
Yeah.
By the United States of America. About Luke Felici stands.
Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I just want to say that Scott McClintock and Patrick Swoboda are excused from tonight's meeting. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals: James Relahan, an employee of the North Syracuse Central School District; Suzanne M. Burdy, a retired teacher of the North Syracuse Central School District; and Marilyn Kirsch, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We have three presentations tonight. Our first presentation is from the New York State School Boards Association. Sandra Rofo, the Area 4 Director, is going to be giving the Board a presentation. Please.
Important presentations with your planning presentations, but I really welcome the opportunity to be able to come tonight to speak for five or 10 minutes, probably closer to five unless you have questions, just to be able to introduce myself. I'm sure you're all familiar with Douglas Ann Land, who was the Area 4 Director for nine years, and she elected not to run for reelection, and so that's how I came into this position. I've been a Board Member for 31 years. I started in 1985. My component board is Susquehanna Valley in the Southern Tier, and I've been a Board Member at Broom Taggabosees. This is my 21st. So, I've been involved with NISBA, but certainly only as, I guess you would say, an outsider. I certainly wasn't involved. I went to the conferences, I went to Board Development, but I really felt that perhaps there was something that I could do that, you know, I would really be a Board Director. When I got on, I am from Broom Taggabosees, and we represent 15 school districts, 75 school districts in Area 4. We're a fairly large area. Not only large, we're very diverse geographically, economically, size-wise. We have districts, obviously, you have probably about 10,000 or so, and the city of Binghamton is in our area. They have districts that have less than 200 students. So, because of that, our needs are very different, but we all have the same purpose, and that's our children. So, I really felt that representing 500 School Board Members in 75 districts, and I believe I represent member and non-member districts as well, that if I was going to represent you all, I needed to be able to get out and meet you, so you would have a better area for Director for NISBA for Area 4. It's not something that's commonly done, but it's just the way that I thought it was, the only way that I could really represent folks. And I have to tell you, it's been truly enlightening. Even though I've been a Board Member for 31 years, it's been a tremendous learning opportunity. You are my 55th district that I have visited, and I come and I sit through your meetings because that's how I learn. One of my goals, in addition to visiting all of you, and I wanted to visit you within the first year, but, you know, if you remember, our weather was not very good. I had a hip replaced in the middle of it, took a couple of vacations. So, I have seven more districts to visit, you being... I will be visiting, and then in February, that will complete my visits. So, I just, I wanted you to know that certainly the services of NISBA are there. For people that are members, if you don't take advantage of the service, I think that's probably the biggest disadvantage that maybe districts do, is they don't take advantage, and then they don't know why they're doing it, because they don't feel... But certainly this year, for those people that are members, the webinars, which are available to everyone, but at an additional cost, the webinars have been invaluable for people as a learning opportunity. There's not an additional cost for members for those. And I actually just visited a district, and one of their Board Members had done a, created a, actually, a notebook of all, he's very gung-ho about the webinars, and feel they're a wonderful Board Development opportunity, and did all of the PowerPoints, and categorized them all, so that he could provide them as a resource for his Board Members, and then when they do a retreat, at some point, they're going to include a webinar. So, we are nine complete counties, three parts of counties, two of the... Large. We go, you know, I'm the south in County, and then all the way up here, about the furthest, and then for me, Port Byron and Cato Meridian are about 108 miles from my house. So, we're a large area. There is, I did include for you a pamphlet, the legislative priorities for 2016 were established during the recent annual meeting, and those will be the priorities. There's also a schedule of events. If you're interested in those, certainly, they're open to anyone. See if there's anything else that I think that perhaps you would have any... Oh, the other thing, and it was really coincidental in my two goals. One was coming to meet everyone, but also, as I came around and visited, and I've already seen something at your meeting, which I believe would be very interesting to... We don't all have the opportunity to visit 75 districts, but as I went around, it took me about the 10th one, and I'm writing things down, and again, writing things down doesn't mean I'm here to critique. I'm here to learn from you, certainly not to critique. But I realized that all districts do little things, that I call them bright spots, that I go back to my superintendent, and he laughs and says, "Would you stop visiting districts?" Because I keep all these ideas. But this, the recognition of those in your moment of silence, which I was reading through the minutes, none of the other districts that I've been to are... What I'm going to do, in, I hope in March, and any district member, I'm going to provide them with what I learned, and maybe you'll find it as a resource to you as well, of things that I've observed, and I only see a moment in time. So, of things that I think, wow, that's a really nice idea, that a lot of times, it's recognizing people, you're recognizing... Any kind of a student recognition that you do, and I am going to put it in some sort of form. It's not going to be polished. It's not really, per se, a NISBA. It's just me to... So, I will be sending that to you, and you can, I hope, to have it in some sort of order, so that, you know, you'll be able to... Like. Does anybody have any questions, per se? I don't want to take up a lot of your time.
Just a quick question. You mentioned the events you hold are available for members in...
There would be a cost for non-members. Well, there's also a cost, I'm sorry. There's also a cost, other than the webinars. There is a... Webinars starting last year, and they've continued to... One of the, I'll tell you, one of the criticisms that I believe NISBA has responded to in the survey that went out is timeliness of inform... responsiveness to... ...established and came out with their... On that commission, that was an advantage, but that was received very positively, because it was out as soon as it was out in the... I think that's what people want. They don't want old news. They want to know that people are... What are we doing about this? What are we doing about this? What is the position about this? And to be on top of it, rather responding to it, to be proactive. Then the message that the Directors have sent to the... Anyone ever, you know, it's been another advantage for me, that I've, you know, I've made relationships with... You know, something comes up, and not for me to answer the question, but for me to be... ...touch with now, right now, and then answer... Then new Board Members who have come on. I've been able to at least direct them in that... So, I want to be a user-friendly Area 4...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into our first PPT presentation tonight, Gillette Road.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I'm Barbara Poole. I'm the Building Principal. Along with, I have here my co-chairs for my BPT, which is Patty Redfield, a sixth-grade teacher; Diane Scupper, our Guidance Counselor. We also have in the audience with some support, Steve Bacon, who's a fifth-grade teacher, new to our building this year, become very involved, and Ursula Pratt, our Librarian. She's come... Coming a member of the Committee and bringing forth a lot of good information. For those that are new, you know, this is a second year for us. We put together a three-year plan, and I'll let the ladies get in. But this is a continuation. We're into year two. We are, as always, looking at the district goals, and of course, we're focusing on the first goal, which is student achievement. You have in front of you, I know you probably looked through it, I'm not going to make too much comments on this. We stayed pretty consistent for two years, and the number of students that we have, the amount of staff, there has not been much change. The only thing that's different... ...by programs. There. I'll let Diane talk to you about some of the...
Again, I know the microphone's been cutting out tonight a little bit. The first data slide that you see is the percentage of our students who are level three or four on the New York State ELA test. The first two columns at each grade level represent columns that you saw in last year's presentation. 2014, and then the grayish column there was the goal we had set for 2015. The third column in the orange are the results from 2015, and again, this is the percentage of students at levels three and four, based on the number of students actually tested. And we did it that way, because as you can see from the column, we had a huge percentage of our students not take the test. I believe this is true at the school level as a whole. And because of the number of test refusals, or the opt-out movement, as it's been more popularly known, I'm not really convinced that these test scores are an accurate representation of how our students are doing. The conditions for testing were challenging at best. With the number of students not taking the test, we had a lot of practically empty classrooms. We had other classrooms where students were not taking the test, which unfortunately, they didn't get the testing. So, the testing conditions, combined with the large percentage of students who did not test, which was about a third in some cases, I don't really feel that this is an accurate representation, but we wanted to show you that in some areas, our sixth grade did make some really good tests. Fifth and seventh, not quite as much, but again, those had a higher opt-out rate. As we looked at these test results, though, there were some consistency across the board in terms of areas of strength and weakness, and that's what... For math, our numbers were pretty consistent from the progress made, but some very high test refusal numbers. So, as we looked at those test results, and we took all of the data that was available to us, and we reviewed the different test standards and the results, we did see strengths and weaknesses. We revisited, and as Barb had said, we set this up last year as an ongoing goal, over a three-year time period, to be done in phases. And we revisited that, and we kept coming back to, yes, this was still a good goal, and it was worth it. And so, we maintained this. And that goal ultimately is to increase our responses across all content and special areas. When we presented this last year, in our Phase 1, we were working to improve fluency across all content areas, and all of our staff meetings and staff development last year were focused around that goal of increasing fluency across content areas. For Phase 2 for this year, our focus is on comprehension. Tweaked this phase of the goal a little bit. Initially, we intended it to have a focus on vocabulary, both content-specific and general vocabulary, but we found that we did get into that last year, as we worked on the fluency piece, and looking at the test results, we found it was... Comprehension, with a focus on close reading strategies to be used across the content areas. Our intention is to continue this with... Just a visual to demonstrate. We had fluency at the core of our goal. We have broadened our focus this year to incorporate the reading comprehension piece. We will again broaden it out, once we have worked on some comprehension goals, and again, back to that ultimate goal.
Keeping with the district goal, excuse me, goal number one, in preparing our students to be college and career-ready, we have found that the data did support the idea that the students have... In the anchor standards of details, craft, and structure, integration of knowledge, ideas. So, that's where we decided to take our focus, and we found that close reading, we felt, strategy that we could implement across the building, variety of different ways, and that would help to improve the students' text. So, we have a list of... So, we have a list of strategies and tools that we have begun to implement this year. Some of these are, we were using last year as well, but what we're really focusing on is the strategy of close reading, getting in, annotating texts, and one of the tools that we devised is a poster that we can present. We went with, well, I'll talk more about that in just a sec, partner reading. The, we're very proud of our leveled library, which I need to give all credit to Ursula Pratt, our Library Media Specialist, for. We were fortunate enough to get leveled readers in our building, and she took the time to catalog them all. These books are all in OPEC, so that we can see them, and the information is organized by students, by the reading level of the book. That information is available to students, teachers, as well as parents, by going right through the district OPEC system. And it's a great way for kids to make sure that they're reading books that are appropriate to them, and it will help them to grow. Let's see. Also, a lot of teachers have been using, in order to differentiate instruction, different web-based programs, such as Newsy LA, Readworks, challenged at their current level, and that way, we can differentiate the instruction a bit more. Next, there's our poster of our close reading marks. So, we know that there are a lot of different options out there when it comes to close reading marks. We decided, as a BPT, and we did get staff, that we would go with a more generic of marks, and because we wanted this to be able to fit nonfiction, so that we could use these across the content and across the curriculum, and especially for our non-ELA teachers, who are, you know, we've been giving a lot of professional development to, to help them realize that in science and social studies and that, we can be developing these same skills. So, we know that some teachers have made different variations of this poster, but every classroom does have a close reading mark poster, just so that we can get that consistency, help implement our strategy. Here's a view of our beautiful leveled library, where there are actually two big bookcases like this, that all of the books are in here, all bagged, and sets of six, and just a little screenshot of what you would find if you went on the Destiny Quest and looked up these books. You can look up by Lexile, you can look up by the Fontes Empenel levels as well. Really user-friendly, and we thank Ursula for that. It's a lot of hard work. So, we're continuing with our monthly grade level meetings and department meetings, and that's given us a great opportunity to interface with the rest of our folks. And we have, we do mix it up. Sometimes it'll be by grade level, other times by content, and we can really work on strategies that we are using in the classroom, talk about those, what things are working, about a professional development, to instruct staff on close reading strategy, and to go over state test data. And we're very fortunate, now that we're all, all math and ELA teachers have been trained in SRI and the SMI tests, and how we can get some extra data and use that for planning purposes. So, now we have an ex, we have even more data and easy access to data that we can keep track of the students' progress. So, we know that we'll be, we'll have the, more data coming with the New York State assessments in the spring. The Scholastic Reading Inventory, our scheduled for this month, again, we'll be testing in both math and reading. And some teachers are discussing SRIs and SMIs a couple more times this year, since the recommendation is, you know, three to four times that the students should be... And we just thought that we would insert a little example of some of the annotation that's being done. This was from a sixth-grade class, just connecting with the text, in order to get that deeper understanding.
Since you guys changed from the house system to five, six, and seven, how's that been working out, in terms of...
In terms of...
Students connecting with each other across the building, rather than individualized in each house?
Well, I think that, I think it would depend who you ask on how that is, because, well, it's interesting. I've had comments from parents who are, who really like it, and others who not so much, because they're used to their older children having gone through the houses, and they're familiar with the teachers. We find, at least I can speak to sixth grade, that some of the benefits of having them in a mixed grade level, or it was nice, because they had the younger kids to be an example to, the older ones to kind of look up to, and there was that little mix. Now, I think that it's a bit different when they're all just with their cohort group all day long. So, I think that it's, I think it's a trade-off. I wouldn't say that it's a negative, positive. I think it just really depends on it. It's quite a bit different.
Wow, and from an administrative...
Happiest group of all have probably been our incoming... Lot less nervous sounding.
Well, Barbara, I just want to, sorry, go ahead.
You said it's a goal to increase the children's ability to read. What percentage, is your mind, is success? Is it 5% increase, 10% on the students? Do you kind of have a goal for yourself of how you know, you know, you've achieved a milestone somewhere? Sure, but that's not practical, right?
No. So, looking at, oh, did we really look at it in that particular way? We did last year, didn't we, as that we wanted a 3% increase across the grade level, that that...
Not that 3% increase. Higher than that.
Certainly.
One of the things that I neglected to mention when I was talking about the test data is, we certainly would like to level one scores as much as possible, but one of the factors that played into that is with the test refusal. Some students started the test, because it's... Saw lots of other people not taking, they didn't complete the test, and when that happens, if they even put their name, have to be scored, and that resulted in a higher number of level ones. Love to have nobody be achieving.
Yeah, it's hard to do that, because it looked, it didn't look that different from years past, actually, so it's hard to throw it out, right?
And it's hard to say what those numbers were like, had all of our students actually taken the test. I'd spread the spectrum of students who did not take it, but without any hard evidence to back this up, just observation, the largest percentage are the students at the very... On the test, based on their previous year's data. Observation on my part.
Thank you.
And that was my question, too. I was going to ask about, with so many students opting out of the test, and you mentioned the challenges on test, the test day that you faced. What other challenges did you have, either before the test or after? Was it hard to keep the students engaged in the curriculum, if they knew they didn't have to take the test?
I, myself, when I'm preparing the students, I explain to them that that's three days of their... That is not the be-all, end-all. So, I personally don't put a lot of pressure on them. The pressure is to do their best, to show what they know, but I don't know. I think that there seemed like there was an awful lot of politicking around the whole issue, and the children, by the time they're in sixth grade, maybe the fifth graders are a little oblivious. They pick right up on it, and I think that they reflect what the attitudes are at home. So, I think that you kind of had, I can speak to my class, it was just kind of a mixed bag, you know, and I had kids coming in and saying so and so, "I don't want to take the test," and so... Know what you've learned, it's just... I try not to put too much pressure on them there. Felt that this was... But we just felt there were a lot of questions unanswered, because there was such a high number of children who did not complete the test. We didn't feel it was ref...
Barb, I just want to, I know this is your last PPT meeting presentation, so you've put a lot of work into this, and thank you for all your help on the team and all the time you've put in. time you've put in over the years for us, so thank you.
My name is David Shaw, I'm principal at Roxborough Road Middle School and I'm joined left by Lisa Alabrandi, math department chair. On your left, on my right, by Lisa Alabrandi, and on my left by Scott Wright, our ELA department chair. Very similar type of presentation here as Gillette, different results. Very similar concerns about opting out and refusals. Questions about the data that we're seeing. Start us off very quickly, we're a little bit smaller building than Gillette with 865 students, 74 teachers, 49% eligible for free and reduced price lunch. Similar numbers of students with disabilities in that one school. Goals you are certainly familiar with as well as your mission. Always strikes me when I look at the vision that our BPT developed last year is how similar it is to the district. Completely separate, very similar things and it's always a nice thing to reflect on. We're going to jump right into some state testing data here and it jumps all over the place in every single way, shape, and form, and you're going to see many slides like this. We have three years here, they jump wildly if you look at the math there, from 13% one year to 25% next year, back down to 18% here after that. That bag, that light blue area is last year's with the high number of refusals, very similar percentage-wise number of refusal. Five, 30%, obviously with more students at Gillette, that means more students actually refused there. Percentage, very similar. Trying to keep our targets high for grade five, of course. Hard to have any reliability or where these tests will go. For grade six, again, it can, it can jump wildly in ELA, down last year by 10 points and then in there. Math, the numbers have been pretty much our highest across the board in the building, 5% last year. Grade seven, downward trend in ELA, not what we're looking for, obviously. Math, we see an upward trend. And these are the same. Poses a big question mark to us, what's going on. Coupled this data with some Ames Web data, it also jumps. Some more than others. These numbers are based largely on the growth of the students. So whereas the state test is an achievement, whether the students achieved a certain level of performance or not, these percentages are of students who are growing at the rate that Ames Web expects them to grow at. Slight nuance that can matter a little bit. Fall of 2013, the spring of 2014, left there for the reading. That was the fall of one year into the spring of the same year. One set of kids and watching, how are they growing? And in that year, those kids, growing at pretty much the right rate all year long as the Ames Web predicted it to grow. Think would manifest in state testing. Hasn't. As you'll see, I have some questions about the Ames Web data as well. It can jump from year to year. Math, you'll see, we only have two years. Part of the reason why is we're going to be moving to the SMI largely as opposed to questionable data. I know Scott and Lisa will be speaking more about. Sixth grade, from one year to the next, if you look at the reading on the far left, the first year, the light blue, we climbed from 45% to 51. The following year, it went down from 49% to 41. Counts for a growth of 6%. Testing year, is it the opting outs that the kids think they can opt out for a state test, but then they can't opt out for the Ames Web? And perhaps most strikingly, in our seventh grade, large reductions. Down to 36%. That's the same group of kids and that shows that they're not growing at the rate that they're supposed to. However, on some of these exams, they did better on state testing than the year prior. Left with this counterbalance of how is the cohort showing that they're not growing at the right rate, forming better on the state exam? Is that the opt-outs? Is that the Ames Web test is given right after the opt-outs and so they've already opted out of exam and now they're forced to take the Ames Web? There's a layer of, I have to take this test or that? Don't know, but the numbers are not going in the direction we want them to. Certainly is required. We're hoping that the SRI and the SMI got a point to show us a little bit. Data of state testing and computing very well. But of course, we're doing a lot of strategies and I thought it was appropriate for our department chairs to speak about that because we are responding academically as well. We don't want to just look at this data and blow it off and say it's not worth anything. There might be something to that, so making some strides there. I'm going to turn it over to Scott Wright for ELA.
Hello, everyone. So, this is the here's what around the data and the kind of responses. The approach that we've really taken this year, and in part, it's really been built over a number of years through selfless work of Jen Malcolm, our former department chair person for ELA. And she really set us up to be able to be thinking about instructional practices, strategies, practices, small group instruction, and she's been a valuable resource. And what we really wanted to do is build on that. And really, as a department, we've moved our, our, our department meetings to a learning-focused conversation each month. The intention of really supporting the district. And so the idea of aligning and using the new document that we, that was, worked on this summer, implementing those standards from across the state and also for the district. And then really specifically targeting differentiation through small group instruction and instruction and learning, both in reading and in writing. So each month, we have, you see the list of things that we've been kind of tackling and focusing in on. In part, one of the key contributors to us being able to do this is, is the book room that was established a couple of years ago and, which is really taking root now. And, and people are going to and referencing to it and talking about how to use that book room and, and how to, how to run small group instruction. And, and most importantly, how do we develop our skill to be able to watch kids and, and anchor our observations so it does impact our instruction? And we're getting closer to that. We're having those conversations now and this is really essentially a list of, here's what we're noticing, here's what our standards are, here's what our data is, so what do we do with that now? And now what? And that's the kind of moving forward and continuing to kind of spiral that by taking feedback from our teachers, wishes from our teachers, aligning them to district incentives that have been set up for us to support us, like SRI and the FMP benchmark and the book room and those things. And having continuous conversation about that, reflective conversation. State test, the Ames Web and the SRIs, sometimes it's almost, it almost feels like it's out of our boat. It's changing, we get cohorts that are inconsistent. What is in our boat is our practice and how we're viewing kids and talking about kids and, and our teaching. So, essentially, you'll, you'll see it broken down in those ways. Curriculum, assessment, and, and then also strategies and practices to help us differentiate. We think a little bit about RTI, you know, a question earlier was, well, how much growth for, for kids over a year? And really, what we're striving for is a year's growth for our kids. We have kids that are starting at so many different varying levels that it's a year's growth for our kids and in some cases, more than a year's. Try to close that achievement. A challenge for us. We believe that our continuous conversation around those, those three big concepts will help us to, to continue and start to, to get the momentum. So, essentially, that this, this frame kind of captures some of those, those big things. We have somebody right now that's doing a project in ELA who's been really, really supportive and helping us, she's one of our AAS teachers. We have another person doing a project for an AFT leadership around RTI, so we're hoping to be able to kind of tap into those, those resources.
Hi, I'm Lisa Alabrandi. Math has done a similar approach this year. We've been using our department meetings as learning focus time every month and filling over into staff days as well for professional development. We started off the year looking at our common assessments, each grade level, updating, revising, looking at, also getting SMI testing off the ground, especially when we see the data isn't matching. We looked into SMI and saw how closely it relates to our standards and really excited we're testing this week and next week. Outcomes and actually using the data, we were all trained last month and taking it all individualized and we can click on a certain standard, we can scroll by class. So using those strategies to plan our instruction. Strategies that we've been looking during our department meetings, one is feedback, using feedback, allowing students to learn from their mistakes instead of focusing on a student's grade or data, like highlighting the mistakes or, my favorite, no problem or answer, and having the kids actually look at examples and their mistakes instead of just focused on the grade or the number at the top of the paper. So we've been watching different videos and different articles on different strategies on focusing on kids, learning from their mistakes rather than just focusing on us. Also, math talk, getting our kids in learning centers or cooperative groups, teaching kids how to talk math, like question prompts, sentence starters, to get that conversation going. Another topic we've been discussing in our department, math conceptually. There's a lot of math rules out there and tricks that we used to teaching to kind of lean against those and get math vocabulary and, that will carry through at the higher grade levels. And away from that. So those are the three strategies that we've been working on so far in our department meetings and.
I always include a slide about our discipline in our building, which had been quite substantial in years past. Culture and climate of our building is of critical success to, it's critical to the success of all of our students. Slide always makes me smile after some. It's, it's nice to see, we've had, that trend continues, certainly. I want to thank Scott and Lisa for being here and talking about ELA and math. Jackson and Jen as well. ELA and math are two things we focus on, but obviously, this is a whole building. And so these three goals have been our blocks, our rocks blocks. We're focusing on our basic skills of our kids, we talked about that in both departments, but it goes beyond math. And our high-yield instructional strategies, again, really focusing on differentiation and assessment right now, really taking our kids are at and then teaching to their levels. Finally, always working on our. With all that said, I thank you for your attention. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
All right, we have no comments from the audience this evening. Do we have any board committee reports or comments?
Just to note that next Wednesday, the 13th, we will have our next legislative committee meeting and that'll be at 5:30.
And the policy committee meeting is also next week on Monday at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Comments?
Just want to mention a couple of things. I saw an article come across today that our varsity girls' basketball team is still ranked number one in central New York, so that ranking will continue. But I also want to mention that for the holiday break, the varsity girls' basketball team traveled to San Francisco. I do have to say that they did not pay for this trip, that they had to fundraise in order to attend this tournament, but very successful. They won the Eastside Prep Coaches versus Cancer Tournament in San Francisco, California. They took the title for the whole tournament, so. Root them on and they play again Friday night at home. I think they also play tomorrow night away. So, one other thing that I want to mention, we've been talking a lot about getting ready for this community survey, parent and community survey. At a board presentation in December, I shared the draft of the survey with the board. Have a timeline. Tomorrow, an announcement will be made, a press release will go out about the survey. The survey will be launched online on January 11th and will remain available to the community and to parents to be able to take that electronically through February 29th. We figured that was a good day to remember that it ends on the 29th because this is leapier. The plan is for us to gather the information from the survey and have the results shared with the board at a board meeting in March, and then we will also share that with the community. So I can't stress enough how interested we are and we're hoping that we get thousands and thousands of, of community members and parents to participate in this survey and check on how we are doing as a district in terms of meeting our goals and working towards our mission. Very important, talk it up, please encourage people to take this once it goes public next Monday.
We have two routine action items tonight. Do I have a motion to take A and B as a group? Paul, Mary, all in favor? We have one discussion action item, the surplus of marketable equipment. Do we have any questions on that? On the recommended board action is declare the non-marketable surplus equipment to be disposed of. Do I have a motion to take that? Mike, Sean, Mike, Leon, all in favor? Do we need an executive session before we take personnel items A and B? Do I have a motion to take that as a group? Mary, George, all in favor? That's unanimous. At this time, I would like to make the motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the Maintenance and Operations Bargaining Unit and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Mary, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Students, you can come up.